Patrick.
It's on Zoom right now, close at the YouTube after the meeting.
You ready?
I'm fifteen. I would like to.
I'm finally going to see the United States of America. And the Republic, the religion stands for one nation, under God. And with this law, and with the way that we do it.
Do I make a motion to approve, like, see, we've got quite a few tobacco permits? The permits were all. Good?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I have three to list here, it's not on the agenda list.
For the tobacco? Oh, so the two, plus the other three?
One to the back room.
Okay.
Would be like a Honda probably.
Okay.
That park, that pocket brewing LLC. Uh, that's a, they own, is a, what I'm trying to.
Yeah, so the back pocket is a farm that's owned up before, though, like, over six.
Oh.
On very avenue.
Is that the restaurant, I'm sure? There's some way of.
Yeah, really, there is.
First down. This is, that's a classy retail alcohol license for five days, so if this is July seventh, July.
Oh, that's right, right. And Brian, Brian, I don't think so. Maybe not, yeah. All right.
And what's the third one?
Um, two of them are back pockets.
Two of them are back pockets.
Yeah, your prison fire, that's a change of the standards, and so they haven't been prepared.
Okay. Plus the Belatera and the classy retail alcohol license, right, that's all, okay. And then we got a firework permit, Ryan A. Lenny, Lenny, for July sixth. I get.
Second.
The motion made and seconded, uh, from the thing on the agenda, Mr. Park has taken himself off for the day. That's the only thing that has been committed. Why we have a motion to approve the agenda minutes. And the permission renewal as stated on the agenda, plus the three we have here in a box. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All of you, motion supported. Uh, as far as supervisors update, uh, Terry Brown was in last week from, uh, on the flood relief money, well, on floods, actually, two thousand nineteen. Here we are in twenty-four, twenty-five years, and getting this state of, excuse me. It's about part of the course.
Everyone goes through that even.
Uh, yes, Terry brought in some. Some news figures, or, you know, they're trying to get this settled up so that we can get the land back in hard hay and go back to lending it to people.
All of the transfers that I've done, that's showing the name, what did you put, where, where are their hands still, about, training them?
There's an amount of money that will, will be sold out, so we can't, we can't accumulate or figure out who has what, and, uh.
So once they find that, it's, no.
It's up to us, I mean, FEMA, FEMA, the federal government, they, they just is not complete yet. So it's up to us to find, I call it, uh, Crystal, there's a cog, that's a gun, they're digging out all the invoices, laying it out. Uh, into a suite, I guess, walking, go through this, see what we, what they have, if they have anything at all. I mean, we thought they had pretty well balanced out when they ended this, but there's so many entities, you had demolition, you had cleanup. Uh, you had plum helping, you know, we changed drift, we did all, like, the things, all these categories have to balance out. It can take a little while, and, like Terry says, we can, we can, now, if we're willing to.
So two hundred and thirty thousand is the amount of just one bucket?
Maybe not, you don't know.
Very apliable, but we don't know. I remember. And until that is found, then we take over the ownership.
No, we're not understanding yet. Uh, also had a board of health meetings on Thursday night, uh, board of health. I explained their, uh, budgetary system theorem for which in the year they're in, and for the upcoming year of twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, they're looking at hiring an administrator, a nurse, and some people who run grants. Uh, that's about all I'm gonna say about the topic till we do some more discussion on it. Had a veteran affairs meeting, went very well, uh, gonna have our, uh, hunt down Bay of Dunn Park coming up in July, we're gonna have it down to lower shoulder, so that it's, uh, more acceptable for the handicapped and people driving in.
At the park.
At the park.
When in July, she's gonna.
Uh, I don't have it written down, I think. That's coming up, so, basically, that's all I have. We're not gonna talk about the food story.
They've got some good fish, some good fish, I'm sorry.
I had a interesting week, um, Napa had a council luncheon at the SAC museum, and, uh, very interesting speaker, it was, uh, Clayton Anderson, the astronaut from Nebraska, and it was pretty fascinating how he was going into, he's just a regular Iowa, Iowa, Nebraska farm kid. He tried five times, he said, I, I had that dream, and he's got married, and his wife knew, you're from people. And he said, it's, it's all what you hear, it's the networking, it's not what you know, it's who you know. He said, I'm not a chemist, I'm not a mechanic, but he said, if you can stand all the training and all the, uh, the camps that they put him through, so, the, uh, rocket was coming down, and he had cameras on the bottom of the rocket that he was gonna take pictures of Omaha, and he was so excited, and he was all ready, and it was getting closer and closer, and he said, all of a sudden, I just started crying. As he said, to think, I am flying over the earth, and here it, they can pinpoint Omaha, he did get one shot. So, he, that was, he was such a wonderful speaker, and he is now in charge of the folding wheel. And his goals is for the future kids to come, and he's got some great ideas. So then later on, we went through the SAC museum, which I have never been through, and that's pretty fascinating, so. Um, then we had a Golden Hills meeting, um, just telling us about some of the interviews, Kara Morgan is going to, uh, no longer be the Golden Hills, so I will have to start interviewing next week, so we've got quite a few applicants to interview, so, that was it.
Hey, Jacob? The engineer, you're back. All right, first on the left, was to sign the final agreement of the base, but it's there. I did later, we finally got that search warrant, and that's a piece of the new, and then sold the shell upside down, and moving to it, and that's right. Because they want the fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. And she can administer to the front off on it, so. The signature, we can say that we have eighteen thousand plus ten thousand, building to down, budget point, that's. It's stripped, we're being working down, it's quite. Yeah, it's. And make the motion, we, 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 we.
I second that.
The motion made, saying we're finally taking for an end office building of fourteen thousand five hundred and seven construction. The main purpose of remaining shell. Can they, can they, uh? Are there any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, motion bearing.
Hey, break my closure. I have two, those are requests that are, they've got, uh, something to do now, maybe they're fact and coordinating, uh, for, going to voters, or, only to, only voters who drafted, uh, the population, we got five, like, here. I just wanted to bring from you guys, uh, on board, and board, they're kind of ragged, but you have to, those closures, not a hard closure, they're a potential, they're just signed off, which, right? Just to kind of, only the ones who are paying, you know, like, practice. So there's, there is so many, there's fifty in there. Since then, uh, there's two reasons, one to get approval, but also with approval, being in the business helps to go out, you, 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 you. And so, with this, we can also, I think most of the locals who prefer that, you know.
So every Friday morning, I'm on the rent, right, and then, do what they're thinking, have them all come in on the same road, so we're not doing any of it. So, the back road, and they think that they're planning on bringing a whole, yeah?
I think most of this is. As far as that, I think, yeah, I would tell them.
Yeah.
I am from the Florida. And you're over in the temporary lines. But you know, there's going to be a lot of them. You know, there's a good one, very much, you know. But also, we have a constraint in certain areas, rubbing in federal profits, we can't cut them into the point of the. Even if it's on the right way, and then they talk to the authorities again. So that's we're still within some of our job, definitely. During that, um, wanted to bring up, you have a couple of things that I'm. Long time back from that in August, so sometimes soon.
Would you be okay with that? I'm not the one doing the stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
If you, if you want to set it up, or?
Definitely.
Yeah. It's in the third.
August. You can hear before you go.
Yeah.
No, it's okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, I think we have Woodfield and. I looked through all of it, so back. The February twenty twenty three, September, December, um. I reviewed all the construction plans, um, everything was good, I think, similar to what I was thinking for a while. This is the preliminary file, it's kind of a forward construction plan, but. Well, now, we're jumping, but they're obviously from us.
So we can move on.
Yes, exactly.
Yep.
All right. We're being very definite.
So we want to do a regulation on that.
Hmm. We're looking to approve the joint wire class, the Woodfield. Twenty four, twenty thirteen.
I make a motion, will through the preliminary for Woodfield.
Roll call.
Proud.
Yeah.
That is, yes, we got.
Hmm, the motion made in the second year. The two of them. Fairly right, but for Woodfield, there is motion. But it's on, it's on.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. He needs to sign a policy, except about that. It will, it will, we get it on record.
All right, yeah, you think he's having a care, it's not me. It's not you that want to have a family.
I don't start to tell about it, but yeah, we'll. We'll be as well, yeah, we'll, we'll figure it out. We'll try to hear that. Yeah, we plan to be better. Probably go there, yeah. Yeah. Never mind this.
Oh, yeah. Sure, sorry.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Mr. Jenner, you want money?
No, I'm not. So we have forty five thousand dollars right now in REIT, that's supposed to go to. For digging out our little kids fishing pond, I'm planning to dig out right from the major center. They started working on it, then we started getting rain at all times of spring, so they kept pumping water and we got back there. So we have money that I think doesn't really go over, but it's REIT money, we won't have to lose it because they can refund, and they'll have a budget for next year. So somehow, I don't know, in the past, I've always been. Doing money, been working this year for that year. So somehow, we have to figure out, be able to, we have to budget the middle of the end, whatever we have to do after some time. Um, no need for formal action, I just wanted to let you guys know, it doesn't disappear, REIT money stays in the refund year and you're out.
Did you leave hanging?
That's what we're kind of doing.
Thanks.
So we will be spending it next budget year instead of this budget year, for forty five even, it's forty five thousand, why is that? I only make an announcement in the. In the area where the forty five thousand dollars each one, the, the place, and always been fine.
I like second thing.
There was a motion made, and second is to. Leave the REIT money in the REIT account for the conservation department of, of forty five thousand dollars. Then sort of discussion, questions?
So they're going to deep the pond deeper?
A little on, right?
Yeah, clean it out and.
Yeah, so we're going, when we have different programs and youth programs, we'll have to talk to them, like, uh, they just run back, forth, the nature of the town, and we don't have to talk to the government. Putting that out, yeah.
Is there a patient at home?
No, thanks. Two people.
Um.
Well, there's one off pocket of state, but you bet they did get done, but then, like I said, now it's full of water, so. Yeah, it looks great, it's full of water, but most of the safety is empty. So we're trying to get it back to about forty four.
So we've had a drought for three years, and it's gone.
They were just getting started and digging, and had it going, had a ring around it, so they could pump the water out of it. And it started raining, then like, we have to figure a solution somewhere else, and that can make money. So that, that's where we're at. Any other questions? Uh, in favor?
I.
Oh. Okay. She probably won't, obviously, so I'm gonna, you know, yeah.
Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, you know, we're fine.
Hey, there. Sorry.
Well, like, you know, I'm kind of, oh, it's kind of gel with the wind, but it looks like it's, uh, so I don't think you.
No way.
Oh, yeah. So what we have is that, uh, for the, for the, uh, for the hot seat special work, uh, for the vehicle maintenance. Okay, sure. And I'll, for the, you know, for the, you know, for the, you know, that, no doubt. Uh, the problem is, is. It comes back to deputies and local, well. Basically, the day, so the Duncan, they went down the road. Of course, I don't feel like it's a big, his, they check things, provide a responsibility, they're cleaning that part, making it work. Part of doing business, you manage to go. Um, so we got a quote through the hot seat, they're listed at ninety four. But they're giving us a discount off of that seventy three point five. We have to pay for the, 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 seven thousand eight hundred five, what are forty minutes? Actually, that would be, to show indeed. Was a bigger model picture, but it'd be that eight seventy one S S, could be that. More, more of that. Not even the maintenance equipment budget. So that's what we're looking at, it was sold in South Port garage, and inside, yeah.
So would you wash on the inside?
Yeah, so usually we try to do, um.
There's a grain?
The problem is, if it's a muddy fall, we have to take it out back to that rain pills and then back, so, but if it's your normal everyday gravel road, uh, well, you're supposed to try to. Pop that way, uh, right now, we haven't started, so.
Yeah.
Go down ten dollars. So I didn't get it, to get it off.
You saw a lot.
Yeah, yeah, minimum ten dollars, so, and I don't think they're too appreciative of, uh, our, our, of, 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 I mean, by that, I bet they don't watch that for her.
Is there a warranty on this, or?
That I can double check on, I would. It is on the, on the back one.
Like they'll take care of it?
Yeah, and so the other, the hot seat, with seven year.
Oh, with seven year warranty?
Yeah, the other, the Omaha office, uh, we called them direct, get that first out, right? And then set sale back to their body for that. But we, we considered buying a smaller one and using it, but then. You're gonna go through, that means it's got seventy one, seventy seven, here you're ready to go through. A couple of those, especially the thirty three people that are going to be watching the photos.
Have you compared this with Concher? Another hot pressure washer?
Yeah. I didn't know, obviously, people pretty stand behind themselves very well.
Okay.
It's.
Well, I make a motion to approve a hot seat power washer. For seven thousand eight hundred and forty five dollars with a seven year warranty.
Got any questions?
We have a motion and a second. We authorized the sheriff's department to apply a hot seat pressure washer for seven thousand eight hundred and forty five dollars. Only as in the maintenance account. Are there any questions? Okay, are those in favor of the motion?
I.
Those? Looking through.
Let me bring it down.
Those wrong things, we need those, I guess, also, we don't.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, and I know, um, the Radbury update, and we'll, we'll straight away, in fact, it's a whole other, in the first, in the section, so.
Are we up for all the deputies that? Um, Josh was trying to find.
So that would be there, so as far as counting, we're not bringing any, so. I'm, I'm watching for any names. Will be. Yeah, but I, I, I probably will, but I.
And Eric.
She.
Oh, oh, okay.
Uh, yeah, and so with, take full handle in the section, I feel like, to, um, take full, kind of pushing that down, so they have two different teams that are on one. Other side, it's bad, they're all, they're checking out, and pushing along with it out. And they each have set, so I think that's, it's, 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 we know. And I think, I think it's too. They push it out at that, so. Still be struggling, but as long as they get the main.
So I know when Josh did, they, he's working for thirty or forty of them, I went.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, yeah, and that's the bad thing, and I probably, they don't give us. Luckily, I'm all right, we're handling it. Yeah, yeah, I think we have, uh, three guys that are also, we, a little bit all the time, for them, the person who's in a box, to do it for our chair, so we can all, or, and.
Okay.
So. Knock on wood.
Gay guy. Thank you, I know, I know. Thank you.
Oh. Yeah, yeah, there's somebody, there's special on back. It was about the one that, 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 that.
Oh, yeah.
Secured by us, after a while ago.
It was your board.
How was it for you?
Hi.
Hi, thank you for coming, sure, for you.
You both doing?
I did, we did very well, um. When we first started this process, we had, uh, three hundred and thirty one parcels that were going to pass sales. By the time it went to tax sale, yesterday, we were down four hundred and fifteen. That sure does lighten them up a little bit, then. And so we sold, um. A hundred and thirteen parcels, but two mobile homes are not, uh, two others not.
Three, two, but.
Yeah, we lost, you know, the, uh, mobile homes. Um, so we ended up with, uh, seventy nine thousand three hundred and four dollars and eighty six cents in the tax sales. We also get the tax sale certificate, which is twenty dollars per certificate. And so that is dependent on the number of bidders, so we made two thousand two hundred and sixty dollars in the, uh, tax sale certificate. So the tax sale brought in eighty one thousand five hundred and sixty four dollars and eighty six cents.
Eighty one.
Eighty one thousand five hundred and sixty four dollars and eighty six cents. So short of the few mobile homes that are still out there that are delinquent, and don't want to getting any other tax money in, you can mail in that ten. Okay, uh, no county held tax sales this year. This is monument, monumental.
It's huge.
No patent laws this year, no public bidders this year, every one of them was a great, great winner. Tax sale. Um, we've had bidders from, the winning bidders were from Lamar's Iowa, Red Oak Iowa, one was from Melbourne. Uh, one would got a few, uh, a lot of them were in New Jersey companies too, which happened when we go through up.
And.
To an online sale versus a. And, and. Well, and that's kind of, that's kind of where I'm from, I mean, not only do, if I do the online tax sale, I do not close my office, the girls can still be waiting on customers. I monitor it on the computer and I can do other things. So, so I thought it was very successful this year, we are.
Who's to you, Joe?
Everything done yesterday, except the printer went down, so we're definitely having to look for a printer today. Simple, but.
Right, you're going to, you're going to.
Yeah, probably, and so, uh. So what we're going to do is we're going to get the, this year, instead of mailing out the copies to the investors, we are going to, um, my budget for, for this is just off the chart, so we're trying to do. So we are mailing copies of the, uh, tax sale certificate to the investors, but we do have to mail out the passes, and so that'll be a hundred and thirteen. So we're going to mail out to these people that did not. And the other thing I needed to discuss was, uh, part, property that is down in, um, with this junction. Um, I guess it is a real mess, and I have not had, with the tax sale, I've not had a chance to pocket Andy. It's the, this is a viable thing, but I do know, he did tell me one other time, it's only like a half a lot, so nobody could ever build on it again, with the house going away, nobody can ever build on it.
It's been a lot, a lot, uh, really.
It's, it's, it's a lot.
Well, for, PJ put something in that he can't build on it for some reason.
Very good.
So, does she want to tear the house down? Yeah, she wants to tear the house down, because I guess it is a mess, I, I did have one other tax sale. Uh, investor looked at it, and once they saw what it was, they, like, you know, what? That was, uh, way too much to demolish it, haul it off, and then not be able to build anything on there. It was just, yeah, she lives next door, so she would like to sit at a green, she's in the, the bigger house. I would assume so, it's happy for me. Now, she is in the process of buying that, 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 and, and, and. So I just kind of need to get some big data for her, she brought me to do tax sale wise, because I think the tax sale was up to, uh.
Yeah, fourteen.
Uh, twenty thousand thirty four dollars with the tax sale and, and, uh, doing what happens, because it's been in kind of how tax sales since, uh. Two thousand five.
I'm just sorry.
Um, yeah. And I guess the house, we were, falls or feeling, uh. That's been now, right? And now the animals were starting to, and the grass. So I think certainly, and people do change, and then. Get back, we got it from the big groups, what we're not thinking, would have to help.
We always can't get our money out of it, so if we can get back on the cap, we will not be weak down in the world.
And it sounds like it's a true problem. I, yeah, it's got a. I mean, if I, if I live next door to that, I absolutely can't be. As long as they're ready to demolish it and clean it up. Mm-hmm. And that's why she said, I, I can't, I can't get twenty thousand or pay twenty thousand, and then turn around and say, you have it demolished, then haul it off. There's no, and that's what everybody, everybody, we work with the company. We can't afford, and then you can't build anything, and you can't get any rest. So I will visit with Andy and this, and she will have, and we have, maybe a few.
Right, right. Okay.
Okay, anything else, Tony?
How was your week? Nobody grabby and nobody built it too?
Tax sale, I had somebody come in yesterday morning, I said, tax sale at eight fifty something, and it started at nine o'clock, and like, it's nope, that's too late. And, so that's when we end up with mistakes and problems and everything, so. But it did go very well, other than, other than that, kind of, it didn't happen, so.
Who knows, we do, and.
Well, we really worked really hard, we.
Amazing.
We worked really, really hard to try to get all the.
Super deal.
Okay, so good, all right, guys, right, finally, very nice, okay.
You too. I guess, I, I cast it up next.
You're up.
You're up.
You're up.
We're up.
We're up, huh?
Come through the table. So, okay, here, we've had some problems again with, uh, our insurance base in here. Things not being, certain didn't right, things not being handled properly. Uh, there's just some issues that's going on again, we've had the same issues before. Uh, the, uh, there's all, I can take care of them, don't worry about it, we take care of all. After a while, we get tired of kicking the same ball down the road. And Sheriff's Department has had several issues in, it's not too, dealing with one, and. She is now filling out multiple long papers, and it's, it's, it's. Please, it's like. Which is why I called ICAST, that said they would come down and visit with us. We're going to reflect some concerns what took place, now it's coming through, yeah.
So, back me up, is this insurance through you guys?
I guess. The property liability insurance that you don't have the most time is provided, now, with that being said, we need to open it, and, and I think that's what it's, it's.
It was special, uh, there's another agent in, uh, Park County, and I think, uh. Talked to things, we said, no problem, he says, just let me know what you want it to be. Three of his, like I say, in, for loan now, or whatever, uh. I got two phone calls last week on, on claims and stuff, that I thought, how you going to get that? And then we had claims turned in, or it sounds like that. People wondering where it came from, probably was generally, but, uh, we had a radio, I thought, hey, that was, I want to know what nine one one, or. We were basing, that they had problems, he was looking at me like, what are you talking about? How it got, she knows nothing about it, Tabus knows nothing about it, and then, uh, there's a hail call, hail. Plane turned in on the building and stuff that you people don't even know about, and why are.
Water damage, so we have a storm, so they were thinking about a hail address, and I intercepted one of the emails, I'm like, whoa, whoa, don't send, we don't have hail, we have water damage, we have a lot of water damage. So then they had to re-put it back to the field, have our water damage appraisers can help, and get it on the basis therapy. Um, I, I have all the emails, I have, well, we were talking this morning, all the things in yellow or incorrect. Um. I've asked for a meeting four times, from the nine million or eight million I work for, I would yet to ever.
With the local station.
Mm-hmm, um, we figured out this morning that we have two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars of, um, insurance on our building, on, it's something that I would. Means know that that would even cover the deal, not telling the computers, but that would, so. All the thousands of dollars of stuff we have in that building, if something were to happen, or, I mean, how if it's kind of been rebuilt, it would be, have a lot of. So that's a major issue, um, a lot of times we'll have cars, and when we go to get new climate, I kept getting some of that. I had an email for a second, but they don't have the rest of it. So it, it comes into. We have four or five on there that we've gotten rid of, and I make packets each time, you know, where it's what I'm getting rid of, where it's what we bought. So it, it's just running into, I feel like the liability for the county is, okay, what happens if something happens, they, they go on or not, you know, and. I am, I kept working with those in the past, we said, okay, we'll cover it, but coming time to do. So, um, I reached out to that Park County guy as well, he contacted me and said, okay, what is it that's the problem? We went through it a little bit, and he said, he has two, at least two other counties. And I've asked people in both of those counties, they're still, we have a working spreadsheet. That we can all see, as well as him, so when we have something, we just add it on his spreadsheet, he'll make it the changes, he'll upload the ICAST data. So we know exactly what is happening, he wants monthly meetings with us, what's been going on, what did he buy, you know, he wants to look at the minutes. So that he can add it to our things as we go along, so we're not getting hit. After, because our anniversary date is July first, we have not yet received our anniversary package. So when Richard and I were talking, you requested it, I got it. Way wrong. So this is.
Lots of stuff that they have, we don't.
Or it's wrong, or not taken off, and what happened last year is, we ended up having what, fourteen thousand dollars worth of changes, after our anniversary here, but.
Oh.
Yeah. And we don't, so.
You know, that's the one thing about ICAST and ICAST. We're not. Think, but, totally don't. With that, it's usually, it's, it's a complex. Uh, we can step in, we can help you with that process. Talk to them, you know, you know, and I've seen that you guys have probably done that, so, like. It sounds like, and, you know, as far as what you guys have to do, that, that ball is totally. You know, sorry, you know, but, uh, you know, but we will help you with that process, really, really, really.
You know, we always try and give our, um, business to, uh, the local, but when it's going to backfire on. Um, and how many times, it sounds like Sabrina has been trying to make this right, um, I say, we need to move on, yeah.
And so this year, this morning, he's also having issues, he's in a meeting, trying to get, to building the conservation building.
Correct.
And I know, I know perhaps some of you guys before, I was on one of those, that. Very impressive, so, I mean, it's not, definitely not, it's our department, um, I did ask, I did tell him, maybe come today, I think. I know that other departments have, issues, and they were, they were, so nothing, and we, we, we.
They have many issues within, you know, over the year, not spending enough data on the buildings and stuff, what needs to be, how do we need to be, how to allow. Collecting on, in insurance deals, and, and each part of the village and month. Well, I think, was there, I opened, remember, we did it a couple of years ago, like, in your sense, shocked, with the roof was falling in or whatever, and they came up top and said. Well, we can't do anything because we weren't insured by, or whatever, well, it's up to them to be looking at our buildings and, and making sure that we're up to par. And that isn't what you want to hear, when we need help, and they said, nothing new, so. Well, we thank the Sheriff's Department, for, uh, in terms of our real work for a while. I don't know what you guys are going to do with it, but, uh.
You know.
Yeah, it, it's things like that, that, you know, you got it, well, uh. Right, I mean, he, it was, well, it just got misplaced, but it's still the idea, it should have been in the proper area, it didn't, yeah.
And we have, right now, what was something? And we have, right now, when it comes to cars in our garage that we receive for, or for people. We have to ensure that, you know, so that, well, we have very little of any in that garage for coverage. You know, we don't want to buy somebody, somebody that's not, we want it to recover and that's a huge thing.
So, um, I'm just gonna say, you know, I I think we need to be looking at another agent. We we give them probably the chances. Uh, you know. Um. He just, he just not playing dead in the business and folks, we can't have that with the kind of budgetary stuff we have now. Really use them up for maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars or more to pay for something that should have been covered, but it. And we can't cover everything and and the departments can tell you so much, but your agent is still to be the number one person on taking care of you.
I'm just looking, it's um, I TAP. Feels really strongly that local agents are important and to point that we have developed a checklist. Of things that our agent, your agent should do for you. And so when I'm hearing these things, I'm just, I'm I'm thinking about the checklist, I'm thinking about, you know, that that is something that we got one year to get in front of you. Um. I I think that if I, if we were gonna make a change and you maybe could do that right now, pretty. That this would be your time if you were to change the, during the next year. Right now, because we haven't received enough as supplements. And so we don't have anything completed for the next year. We've been really the global work of our agents are doing. Um, obviously, we're not. But it feels good going to you. And we do have an agent in um, um, alcohol us, who's I TAP certified agent, Jeff Rainer, yeah, okay. Jeff is an I TAP certified agent, which means we could practice that better, I believe in that. Um, I TAP, yeah, the program itself and the services and things that we offer and so um. Who is he here? He's a small, he's a small data data. Okay. And he wanted to be here today, but he already had some of these mistakes. So if we wanted to, if we decide, he would be more than willing to come down and use this, he said, anytime. Uh, he just couldn't be there today. I told him about the community. He's like, I already, I'm already out of state, I didn't feel so bad, but he's not, I think he's trying to activate Richard as well.
Yeah, I thought we were.
Well, whatever you do, um, I think your intention is to renew the I TAP or at least the I TAP quote for your seven one or you or Richard. But you will, there's a couple of things that we can do with the birthday here. To sit back and while you're living in prison, and that way you don't have to hold on to working on us giving your invoice to you. And it's okay, if you, I can send out the supplemental that you, we figured out for you about, you know, to. You, and you want to hand it out to the department heads to have them look at it, and then you know, scared one that really bad.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what I was looking at. And I did, but you have others. So that's good. Yes. So they're all kind of interested to see if they're uncovered as well as insurance cover issues. And what I can do is we can update the proxy with all of that does is just the six K two is going to be your first, our first contact. And then you then have a claim or anniversary news information. Um, and we could second. Also, we would, we would want to through that. Um, and then I could email that all to you or to whoever. Um, and then that way we we do that.
So we did some, but we get a deer, get the car.
So.
Oh, was that out of, was that a commission?
Which, which that? We have to.
I don't know. Richard just said that there was a claim that somebody had got a deer.
That is, that was the last one. I just tell the other one this morning myself. The deer, the first deer is back in commission already.
Okay.
They.
And it's the same car that, oh, the different car. So we got a car that gets the deer and what was the other one?
Both were deer here.
Okay. Are they out of commission?
No, they're both drivers. The one is sick. So it's back on the road. The other one is drivable. So it's gonna be driven until the part.
Starving deer. Something still there, it's always confusing. Sheriff's Department, Conservation, I'm using to, uh, please have them come in. Okay. Are they the ones that turn? Claims in or is there a person that we designated in the county that they they pop through before it comes to?
That's totally up to you. Now, um, other counties, then they might just have the audit, you know, the claim. Uh, it might be the sheriff and the sheriff's department that's in the question. That might be the conservation branch that does the competition. Or everything might go directly to the auditor, then the auditor submit all.
See that?
Yes, T V A, yes.
I mean, I. There's a lot more hands on it, which. Slows it down, I just think. So I mean, if you guys. You know, you know what you're doing already.
We did have it set up to where.
And it used to be that way.
But I would submit it to the agent. The agent would then admit it to I TAP and submitted it. It triggered an email to you guys and to.
That's what all of a sudden has happened recently when you bypassed the agent.
I did that.
You're doing, no, but I mean, that'll happen. Like with the hail and all that, and then that's when I'm like, what are these things? Because I did not receive those.
That's what they were supposed to be doing. And I don't think they ever updated, he was.
But I'm receiving her emails still and I'm without seeing them.
Yeah, but that's what it's supposed to be. Okay, it's always a question. Okay.
And that seems to work, I mean, to me, because you're the one, you know, you're the main focus, like, second, everybody would know their, their stuff. I just feel like it would be. This is, I put away as you're doing this, you know, or the agents bring it for you, have, you know, you gotta admit it. And then it comes through and we've got the information here that you need, but we don't have to do that process for you.
And if we have that voice expression, you know. Right. Well, at least we would be notified. Like, instead of us just finding this out, oh, somebody put a deer.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And a lot of, but this morning, it's, there's sometimes, so you guys get. I I took it on and it was mainly because I had a claim in the way, which usually I have a lot of where I want to come to get. So I have a claim in my shell, and so you guys can either pick this one line and pick this car, so.
These planes are just using a big plane. I got the agent, that's the problem. Yeah, that's the night end of the time, yeah. They kind of do it thoroughly. So I didn't show that with uh, initially, they contacted us, they were talking to us. And they contacted us, they're helping us to do another. Conservation, same situation, so. All, all of them go to contact us.
Yeah.
And then they're using a plan. Not all, all that stuff.
I like that better because the more plans we've got to go through.
Correct.
The more the load you've done, and this way you guys got it.
Yep.
And every claim that I TAP sends out, they go to uh, board that he's like, like. Yeah, absolutely. And uh, and then he sees the email saying, hey, who's the claim that submitted, the claim on nature? If you're getting questions, it's out there. It works pretty slow, you know, if you have a record of it. The department has a record of it, and so it happens.
Each time, like when we have a, an issue, I'll submit, Richard, for the supplemental, the pictures, the. Um, excellent from our body check, so we have to get there right away, so they can get pictures. Um, and then I submit all of that. Well, it was not given to our agent to I TAP, so the I TAP adjuster. Or, uh, I told him that, but our, our, I TAP people. Were great. They call, they say, we didn't get anything like this. Send it to us, or then I would send it directly to them. They're phenomenal. I mean, they have a really good relationship. So now, when I went in this morning, I'm able to just drop, yeah, I can drop the information in and I have it right away. Takes a whole set of stuff out of I TAP. Problem too, never getting. I mean, it, you have to do it either way, but we say the right tool. Um. Why, maybe the current, um, finally, fine. And the Richard is just, I'll send something. And I understand the title of the change. Should we follow them?
I think you're.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's for me. As long as somebody gets contact in the same way, we will be on that.
You can bet, oh, ooh, for me, that's what that's called.
And what's just sign the half one, yeah.
Half one.
I've seen.
Half line.
So you can miss that on the show if you don't, can we? Yeah, I mean, definitely. I think if there's a claim in this week, I would make it, you guys can do a work session. With them or a meeting with us, I think that would be good to, with the supergraffiter.
Right, and then I would say some, at this point, is.
Twenty seconds. Twenty seconds. Um, if you say go.
Okay. So that'll give us four days, yeah, everything.
You can wait till.
No, I do, oh, I. Now I have a signature.
No.
But I don't do things like that.
Well, the department that I wrote Chad, Chad, John, John, the other day, the lady said, thank you. It went through it. Later on, the department lady called and said, Richard, we can't do things like this. Well, okay, that's kind of, you know, that would be nice. The lady, I thought, okay, you know. She really didn't look, she didn't touch it, said, thank you, and.
I bet.
So it is.
I think we're good. I don't think, I mean, I'm gonna, I have the update. Um, and we'll just, you know, we'll wait for, we'll start processing, whether we did it and operated well, did it process, we need to make a change. Um, because I've submitted this and done all the work, if I'm able to be able to make a change, and if they're going to, they're going to do that.
Do you think we can come back to the department head and hold it up for Friday?
We can like punch that with them?
Yeah.
We can send it today. We have time to have it back by Friday.
Or even Monday, we'll try to.
Right.
Right. If it's future, we can want to. And I think that would.
I'll request it for Friday and then.
Yeah.
Okay.
At least we'll have an idea when we're done.
Yeah.
Well, give me, if you want to. One of our, what are your department, and if you want to break it up into. You share us with us.
And consider.
That'd be really.
Secondarily, yeah. Yeah.
And we did some of that stuff. Friends is part of it is on ours and probably if you have an. Yeah, but if we, if we change, you probably want to monitor both.
Yeah.
So.
We call it.
But now I'm watching the case, but I'm doing that. Oh, yeah, that's why I said.
And that probably felt.
I remember.
Why you're T and Z behind the wall?
Well, come on, it's all like.
Um. Do they have anything? No, that's weird. Like we have, you know, the end. Um, so they have. I don't have S R. But there's definitely a number, Oliver, who's coming, who's in the quarter, are we all together?
I think they're all.
That's what I'm saying.
Building coverage, and then you got like a umbrella sort of.
Right. Right.
I'm looking for Ingswell. She keeps throwing up.
Oh, no.
Maybe she would use her old.
I gave, each of my kids whatever for Christmas, they share. Love.
Oh, it's great.
You don't file it, we do, yeah.
Yep. And this, I use Beddons, which is our brand name.
It's, and it is amazing, it's just incredible. Now you can add audio.
They did.
Yeah, to the area. I don't. With any property.
Mm-hmm.
I will, what I'll do is I'll find. What I like to do is mark on there what on the statement of values, which department is responsible for this building? And then we can break it up by building. I mean, if I could be provided that information.
Then the auditor is responsible for everything for us. And you guys are, thank you, your building, your property, the sheriff. And Conservation, or the brand, and the VA, their building, yep. And then the new ones, the ones with me. They're right here.
They're in this building.
They're in this building, yeah.
They've got towers.
Yeah, they've got the towers, that was used up right now. Um, and then. But you're a rose, and trying to build them, they're building up. And their sheds and all that, but they have that.
We outline buildings.
Yes, and change. Well, they.
On the street, they, they go, they go.
In Melbourne, and.
The sheds for based on how many she has.
They go, uh-huh, so they've got more than one.
Yeah, they've got. Yes.
I love it.
Um, and then. Public policy, but that one. So the end. I T. But you're in the general.
That would be all together, yeah. But, but we're not.
But if you have, that you have to have an entity applying to.
What we do, right? What we do. As far as the court calls itself.
Mm-hmm.
The auditor is always the auditor.
Well, and with the Health Department, they're in the N F, but we also have P and Z, and there we have our. Uh, communication and I T person. In that same building, so.
Just add it on, so we pardon you then.
Yeah. And I would say that would be your go-to, that you can still come here for. Is that, you're all one zone? Yeah, okay, so you need to. And we're, we're, I TAP's working on, um, starting to do appraisals again for buildings. And those discussions, in addition to doing just the building records, obviously, we have. Um, not going to lose them, but. We can help with that appraisal. Um, and so. Um, I, and I'm, as I'm running through there, we have some shelters. At the park, that would be, that would be. Yeah.
And cabins, yeah. He's heavy.
Yeah.
And that little building. Drive, building, your tent, and it's up in a row, so. Conservation, they. Have one of those, yeah, but it's. That is all required.
We will.
That I'm.
Is that one of those places? I believe the third would be July four, to be coming up here, you know, and that. Well, that would be.
Late, we do.
And it'll be a big, that, that could be the community.
Four ninety seven five change.
Right here in my office, that's how it works, and that's how we.
Unless it's very, probably.
Where's it at? What, what's it at there?
It is six, four, nine, seven, um.
Two hundred and thirty-five?
Thirty-first, yeah, thirty-six, I would, yeah, just like the.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll.
Make sure others know.
Six, four, nine, seven, five, two hundred and thirty-five, four buildings.
Go on, I'll go.
Mine comes at fifteen.
No, 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 it was one, yeah. Okay, so why would the LaBanci Church be? Well, you, uh, township, when you are, when I have a county, well, the township come on, and it's liability coverage. And then making, and, obviously, looking at property onto, um, your special, and so.
Are you?
So, no, because we didn't know this was happening, evidently, I mean, I didn't ask for it, I'll have to ask. So, you know, whenever it's added, so, uh. Um. Mark and Teresa, I don't know, really, I'll have to be, so we chose that, you know.
Okay, so now, we, uh, have got a, great, so, we're doing it, so. Some of the, that'll, you know, for, for change.
Um, well, which, which, why, I don't know.
Lying on.
Why?
You want to turn over?
No, why?
Their, their scene.
Oh, yeah.
You know, something every day here.
I'll go grab them.
We're good. I should have had, for, for cemetery, I've got a cemetery that needs a lot of help.
What? If it's without it.
Yeah, it is.
It's probably worked on.
Well, Richard, you have some damaged headstones that you, the township didn't know what to do.
We're still.
Would they, would you cover cemetery?
Well, we, you know, it's gotta be, it's gotta be liability, so if, um. If there was, um, a headstone, maybe. Where you were mowing, because you were responsible for, yeah, I am, I'm trying to keep you, um, I'm resolved, so, um. If you're responsible for making the cemetery, and your mower kicks a big rock onto one of the headstones, and then the headstone. And, yeah, we're to get liability.
As far as, as natural. Quality, you know, windstorm, tornadoes, and so, I mean, this thing, this thing's went through one tornado already, and, and four windstorms, and.
Yeah, no, you have to actually schedule, um.
Well, then, okay, who covers? Who covers the guy that we hire to mow it?
Uh, well, the whole, yeah, yeah.
Seventeen.
It sounds like what you're like, goes coming in, I don't think you, so we're gonna look at, so.
Hire, first, first you hire, hopefully, you guys, we're good, so, we're gonna, we're.
Like, I think, yeah.
Mm-hmm. There's something interesting with the LaBanci Church, that's just, as a profile, it's just about, well, from my place. And even his sisters really love it, and so when I go out for the grant, um, uh, they just let me not to say. You could cash for as much money as you want, because that will be reserved, so, it's exciting, yeah. So.
What happened to Chief Almonte?
Well, Chief is down by my pasture, I don't, I don't, well, I'm saying, I don't care. But, and, very excited.
That is, yeah. Well, I would, I, I'm gonna start the process of this, if we make changes. It's since, well, I mean, you and I, one, in those, so, I mean, we have a very tight window that we have to start going, okay, we need to move forward. Um, we, if we make changes for things that are properly under a hundred thousand dollars in value. Each item has, has to be under a hundred, two thousand dollars in value, then we can add it and notice. If they are vehicles, we can add at any time, at any value, at a limit. Yeah, I, I don't understand what's happening, like, that, so.
Oh, last year.
Yeah, yeah, because we talked about, yeah, vehicles?
Yes.
That were added up to another, and then whatever you. Can you provide, I think, you can, you can, yeah, well, can you provide us, I mean, because there's, there should be. There should not be, I mean, there is no movie that's on, or anything. So I don't know what.
I don't know, I'm not, I'm not.
I mean, it's. We never, we, since I've been here, for, in the past, at least the past five years, we have not gotten a renewal. And so after the renewal, and then we're asking, and then things are made. And like, we didn't. But, so. It was like the last time. But. Okay, um, any of that, well, it, I mean.
Well, I'll find it, and I'll be.
If you, just so we're clear, though, I don't want to mislead anybody, because if, if you were to add, um, like, right now, if you add a, a vehicle, it would be, it would be in invoice packet. And it would be, it would be, it would not be those separately, like, yeah, so the only time we charge for a vehicle is in the invoice packet. If it's not charged in the invoice packet, we'll make the changes, but we won't charge it, does that make sense? Okay, yeah. Still, it's over a hundred thou, or, same as over a hundred thousand, yes, property over a hundred thousand. But vehicles, in any, in any way, that is. It's. And we can help with this, too, um, you know, regardless of what we do, we can come down, and we can help audit the property, we can make sure the fees.
And, you know, I think of the beating, there's a lot of. At least not listed, or, which way. Because in the meantime, we've upgraded some of our, um, secondary room sheds, I'm sure that has.
Anything or nothing, so.
Yeah, that would probably be real worth it. I, I definitely think, well, I, I especially think, it's been a while since we've updated, uh, particularly the secondary roads, the equipment. That equipment is limited to the top end, even if it replacement costs, the top end, with, um, schedule, so if this is undervalued. If even at replacement cost, it's still under what we have. So it's really, that is, that's our point, that we want to make sure that we're getting that value. And that's, yeah. The parts are different, the parts are different, because, uh, unless they're ambulance or fire. You know, we've been, um, um, then they're at actual type of value, and, you know, that's different, we're talking equipment, and I don't even think. I don't think you have any of your spots, hold on, I mean. Well, contact, there's conservation, can I just get a, yeah.
So that.
Boers, they got Frankfurt. The, Cedar. But, you know, we, we have a lot of scheduled equipment right here, this is what we've got, um. We have under, at four eighteen Sharp Street, up here. And then we have this guy, Council, with the alias Manager Software. That'd be. That's, uh, nine one one, yeah. Five hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Should be four, then, not three.
Oh, that's what, that's, yeah. Um, yeah, that's the kind of, that's this, if that not, these are the numbers that we're limited to, so if they were more than that, I can't say what, um. Yeah, like, the dawn here. Seventy-two thirty, I don't know what that is.
That's Ro, that's four one Ro, obviously.
Oh, so, that's, that's the engineer, which, this is, I, I just have not built, you know, because it's a secondary road, and that's.
Well, they've still got four oh one, that's the shopyard.
But I mean, the equipment is still under four oh one, uh, the, the, the secondary road's equipment is still.
Yeah, four oh one's still there, as, four oh three's not there.
Yours is four oh three?
Yeah, theirs is four oh one and three oh five. Three oh five's the main.
So.
Four oh one, I think, is the yard, shopyard.
Yeah. Yep, I think, but I'm looking at, but, but now, I'm going, I see a lot of items, a thousand dollars in value, and, so.
Well, it's, it's, I don't know what's inside, yeah, and you're gonna have to have a thousand dollars.
Wouldn't we reach, you know, a greater, you know, with? Three hundred, and, yeah, we have, like I said, we have that, a sentence program, we're just starting to roll out that value, and all heavy equipment. And so, these, a lot of your, all heavy equipment over a hundred thousand. You have a lot of equipment that will, we call in that category, and, if nothing else, you'll say that you're going to go with them, and that we know that you're right.
It's just.
Maybe they'll tell us, you know, what you're, that you're, you're rushing for, yeah, it makes me nervous.
Yeah, we're, the very vision of all these ones.
Uh, yes.
We got that right, which, oh, tonight, yeah, another one.
Oh, I just, yeah. Awesome, awesome. Okay. All right, well, are we still covered, let's say tonight, exactly, they come and come through, or we get rolled on, or whatever, if it's not correct yet, are we still covered? Uh, to, we said we wanted to. Is that how that works? Um, so, what, we can talk, like, worst case scenario, okay, let's say the whole town was, the whole town looks like that, that's not very likely, you know. Back on one, um, your total building blanket is thirty-four million. So thirty-four mil, thirty-five million dollars, that's gonna pay for all of your buildings. Not what's inside of it, just the buildings themselves, okay? Um, from themselves, and you have your personal property, that one is just over four million. Your electronic data processing is one point one million in total. Now, that doesn't have to be separated out, so there are some, there are some ways around that, that I, I would talk to you about if I came down. Um, or over, none of that.
So Sabrina, what happens, like, since you've already got water damage, and we get another two, three inches, that's what I'm worried about, I mean, have you tried to cough the wind or something?
We have not heard that, we have not heard that. They came out over.
We got, but we did nothing today.
Like, they don't know what's causing the water in the window. But they know what's causing the water in the roof that's, yeah.
So, from the roof, it's just coming into the window, it's coming into the building through, from those.
Up, down, the sun, the straight winds that were pouring.
Yep.
Okay, that's, that's what the windows down below are doing. Okay. So.
It's a drain system.
Oh, there's a drainage system.
On the south end of the building, all the big, long, long, I don't know, up south, I, all those offices, adding offices, so, fine garagebacks. They're all outside, and the windows just leave, start coming in. But basically, when you know it's gonna rain, you have to put it on a shelf, because it comes in that window, but when you go up the top, there's nothing, there's.
But is there a gutter under there?
It, it's a drain system, helping it go up, like.
Is that flood? Nope.
No.
So, there's a flashing around one of the pipes, that we think maybe some of it's coming in, which is causing it to come in, giving our roof. Bubble the roof, and then go down in the building. Okay, we have, that's what I was working with.
I mean, I would, I would work to give them that anyway.
Uh, I, yeah, I, I. There, he said that we have to find somebody that they were gonna let us know whether it would be a rooper, or what.
We have no.
It sounds like it's got a, a rooper. Yeah, we have no idea, okay, then. I'll, um, if, will you, yeah. New shore, claim on there, that's, uh, sort of, it overflowed, and, like, it's, yeah.
Have you been having that, yeah?
Beautiful. I, I. We call it, we call it two, uh, eight, oh. Oh, the lower, I have, the overflow's, so, yeah. It was, I think, in the emergency chamber, I want to throw, and, yeah. Broke.
You guys have a very scary. We've got, absolutely, because we've got, we've got, we've got, we've got, yeah, that's really impressive, I think. Like, what would my best, like, the, the, like, the, like, the, like, the process, we, we, we give some of the, the, it's really, maybe, knowing how, it could be, but, if you make, that, it's.
For, I'm going to. If there is something that you've done. You know, happy to, and, and, you know, the, 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 that's, we all know, we follow, we, yeah, absolutely. Not everyone could do that.
Well, we've had, we've just had some really issues over the news, and it, it just keeps boiling and boiling, and they have asked, we have asked. Nothing ever changes, it doesn't seem to take it to heart, but we have to have this done. And, you know, it's, all we have to do is, like, for, like, to, 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 right, right.
And we, well, we passing them, like, there was not many of them. Yeah, they, well, they said, I, that's, I'm looking, okay, Steve, or, someone, someone who. Of what, like, he does that for the climate and stuff, okay, I know Sir Prokane, and then they're. Playing up and now, I'm just on, I think, apart, and then he's contacted, um, several different contacts to come in, and did a bit of something. Um, and I believe, I've got a calendar today, but I believe that, I'm just, they show them all. But I'm gonna have to verify that, like. Please, he's, he's, he's been here, obviously, he's. The, the, the name of the office, I don't know, I don't think, I don't know. He was in there, I was explaining that, it sounded like he's.
He's already, he's, he's.
No, no.
No, it's okay.
Um, okay, I'm gonna find out if that has been both, both, and, me and I both get someone, if that, we will be, yeah, but, 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 bringing the, the, the staff over to you, and, yeah. Yeah.
That's, right, buildings, that's, I don't know.
For, not very all.
Every month, it costs dollars to fix something, or.
Well, we'll have a, maybe if I don't, if they, if they, 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 I was just, like, going for.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, so much. Well, thank you for letting us.
My granddaughter, I belong to this party.
Oh, yeah, oh, there's another, how can I just teach you about, that was, that was, that's, could be fun, like.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much, thanks for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. So glad you're here, yeah, thank you.
Oh, oh, really?
Oh, I don't know.
No, I didn't, you're doing it, I was, I was.
Hang out, and, and, yeah.
Public health is supposed to show up before ten o'clock.
Okay.
At the time, they told me that it's, it's, yeah. When I, I don't even, I don't even start, Mike.
That's a good thing, for, for.
We had a conversation with Mike Galloway and stuff yesterday, Lonnie, you should have gotten an email on it.
I did.
Okay, uh, we met with Mike Galloway and stuff here. Talked over public health. Asked some questions, concerns we have, you know. Uh, give us some more ideas on, on laboring the budget, or if it's a forward, what we should do, and probably not do. Uh, you know, there's a question about environmental, we're being, um. Building departments, P and Z, and all, they're so good, you know. Losing things, and they're not losing anything, so, I mean, they're, they're going to go to make it better, working conditions. Uh.
So, can we jump in?
Yeah.
So they now have hired an administrator.
We're working on it, yeah.
Oh, so they have a, got that?
Yeah, yeah, Brianna, was, they, they were, okay. Everything over, so.
Chill out. And then they hired Sherry Bowen.
I'm giving, giving time, find mine.
All right.
Chief, chief. Chief, chief. They're gonna share his files, I'll do a part of the version, so. I'll, I'll run down. For you, we've got people behind on all this, um. At the meeting the other night, we talked about the current budget and stuff, and I said it's not to worry, things would be taken care of, the salaries and stuff that we paid. And we're like.
Cover.
We have some very good people up here. Uh, and then, of course, they discussed the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, they wanted to know about the four percent increase, yes, they are entitled to the four percent. Uh, over the three, you know, multiple times. Okay, then we start into this hiring business. I read through them three times about the budget, luckily those things get, when they were gonna get it and so on.
Thank you.
Every time they brought it from way to hire, I was. After that, hired everything missing, but.
So where do they think this money's coming from?
They're claiming to have it put in the coming budget. So they have a nursing position that they hired, will not start until eight one. Twenty-four, first is in August. And then, uh.
For how much?
They hired Deanna. As the administrator, moved her to administration position, salary of seventy-nine thousand. Uh, they moved, uh, the magic manager position back in, uh, Alex. At twenty-five dollars an hour. Then, uh, the next thing that they went through was the, you have to listen to this, emergency preparedness physical, physical agent. Will be Sherry Bowen, she will be part-time at twenty-nine hours, she will be paid thirty-eight, forty-six an hour. Then they hired an emergency preparedness grant coordinator position. Her name is Linda DeBolt. She will be paid thirty-two fifteen. Um.
So is this cheaper than our grant lighter that we?
This, this, these two people here, Sherry and Linda, their salaries will be paid by the veteran.
And, and they're sure?
Yes, they're gonna be on the zero in that thirty-five. Uh, and then, um. The state wanted to vent for that, and they didn't venture to do it, so we still have it for another year. And I, and I, I see no, this is what killed me, you figure out those, the salary and the stuff. What are we doing this for?
I just have always been, we're putting abandon, we're not fixing the problem. So how much did they hire their nurse for, which, that's an RN, right?
Uh, seventy thousand.
Seventy?
Twenty, she's, she's working right now at, uh. I'm mad at that. Most of it. She won't start the late one because she's getting married and so on.
So did we, um, publicize this emergency physical agent and the grant coordinator?
You don't have to.
We don't have to? And why don't we?
Because you didn't have anybody that's working for public health do it.
So we don't have to put any of their positions in the paper for two weeks?
This is in-house. Administrator position is in-house. And they had interviews for the nursing position.
Right, they did, probably publicized that, that's true. So did Galloway say that was okay not to? I think that's breaking the rules. To not advertise this? Okay. So you got hired in-house and not publicizing? Okay.
Well, we didn't let it go.
But she's not in-house.
And then they were.
Yeah, that, yeah, that. But the other two? Linda.
They advertise, they advertise to the nursing positions. And the office.
And the one that's not.
And the office in A would stay in, in health.
Right, okay. Yeah.
And then, uh. The homemaker, God, the Christian and salary. I make sure I focus right, uh, she was. She was taken down to, to Sally with the effect of July one of twenty twenty-four.
When he needs something down?
Well, I, I, I'm not sure what she was being paid down, but she was down to nineteen seventy-six. Maybe he's the salary.
She was a real homemaker, and after going through all this. So we just eliminated the physician and now the homemaker. Okay. So then every homemaker is paying nineteen dollars an hour? Not everyone, no. And so, Brianna, you're now going to be seventy-nine thousand. And Alex, you're twenty-five dollars in salary. And the nurse is seventy thousand. Seventy-five thousand.
The reason. I had, I had her down at seventy thousand, seventy-eight, one, over the coming year.
And then Linda DeBolt, the medicine grant coordinator, she's thirty-two dollars and fifteen cents in salary. Is that cheaper than our coordinator that we hired? I mean, did you not like it, Erin, that?
No, that's not a normal grant coordinator, but the position requires like that.
So Linda replaced Scott. Maybe what? So Linda is replacing Scott, the grant coordinator, emergency preparedness. And so, that's that position, the position for Sherry is the physical, to oversee the whole project, and it's just a part-time position. It's just to have better eyes on that.
It happened.
Sherry couldn't do the grant coordinating also? Right, it's a, two different things.
It's a requirement, it's a. Requirement for two.
But the best grant will pay for that. Yes, yes, that you say.
And it helps us retain a lot more of the, um, the administration position that is correct, when they come to the actual work. So before, clearly, when you know the handful of short-term administrators, there was a lot of happening, and today they have to add that one, three, ten.
So the spreadsheet. Like, you're back on board. We're the best. I get, I think we're getting to consulting for only people by the state, did we really say that out loud? Okay, so this spreadsheet is showing basically what we were given as numbers, um, I didn't put it in, so we're just gonna show it. Of what, so in the red, is basically what the salary is, will be. And then the FICA and the IFRS, along with the insurance over to the right, so what they currently have is single or a family. And what the totals are over to the right, and the bottom section are the newer positions that are also going to be added, so you guys, at the very bottom, your total. Then in the green, it's very, I guess. Currently, what the county would be giving you on July one is one hundred and fifty-five thousand, your monthly cost and salary is showing right there. So the ninety-eight thousand, sixty-one, eighty-two, that does include FICA, IFRS, and insurance on that dollar amount. And then the difference between what the county is giving you and what, uh, the, your salary to present any of your bills. Eight hundred and ninety-one thousand? Well, it's actually this down here because of the reason your positions are annually. Now, what we had put in the, so for those, when we brought you the spreadsheet, the supporting, it was all. Our total salary was seven hundred and eleven thousand, not including everything else, uh, correct? No, including nurse and the, the women's. Okay. And it was a wrap up. Right, right, what you truly have. Well, right, and I'm looking at that right now, I'm just trying to get rid of what you're showing and what you show. So, I mean, you'll just give me a little look through it, I don't really. Okay, so what we showed here, and the total five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, so we brought you a total of seven hundred and eleven. Five, the five ninety-five, right, just showing what they would be getting with the four percent increase that they were beginning as of July, July one, this is stuff that is right here, not a FICA, not IFRS. Right, and we brought you seven hundred and eleven thousand in that, I mean, with budget that we bought them to. With your five hundred thousand, we brought you seven hundred and eleven thousand. I'm, I'm just saying that this is what. I just wanted to. That's all, what you're gonna bring in the grant. Which one, which one? One for twenty-five, when I brought you that spreadsheet, the purple and the yellow one here, the total salary is seven hundred and eleven thousand, not one hundred and eleven. FICA number sixty-four, uh, six and sixty-seven, and it was thirty-six. So we, the total there is salary and friends, one million. Yeah, so I've got one million, one hundred seventy-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-three cents. Right, yeah, when we go through here, when we take them out, my people, when I come through, we're at one million, there, the way you said. There are, there happens, and the thing for it is. Yes, there have, like, there are, see, in the window. Up or down? My, my number's here, for instance, is what Dolan currently has, and I said in the red, and I don't want to go and change it. Yeah. Okay, well.
True.
Right, this is current. Okay, this is what we have, so until we have that. Right, well, who's changing, because we went from single to a family on one of them. Well, we went from, um, the changes in insurance that you showed. Jody changed from family to single. Right, and we budgeted for the nurse, a full time, our family, we don't know that, so we're gonna leave about a family. We will budget it, um, for, um, our person who's speaking over the emergency preparedness, we put that in family because we didn't know what they would do. Right. That's what we did. But the best will pay for that. Yeah, but it's gonna be a people, so that will be the other things, the natural. We put, we've put our administrator in with family, and we're not gonna leave that. Because Brenna is. Right, but I have for. I have, I have her as administrator on here, I just can't. I'm never saying one fifty, so your number's saying. Then, like, the clientele, make sure that you have all these people in there, that you're gonna eliminate anyone over, I guess, that you'll have to give me this six hundred here to compare your job, okay? And I need my pain, so I think I'm sorry, I'm gonna. Give me one second. But you'll have.
Mister Enos is gone, and we'll be.
He's gone. Yeah, he's gone. Well. Here's a slide now, I'm, I had him in for a few hours, but not for, we haven't seen anything. People work on that going side, associated, because he was going to part-time, other than that, we, like. And who's that? Scott, and Scott's coming down in five. All I have Scott in at is, um, in salary, one, one thousand, two thousand. It's not meaning of the need of money. He's putting, he's, yeah, she's putting, so he's not gonna need that. Um, but. He's the one that's using the computers for people, yeah. He's being replaced, so. Hang on, give me one second. Hold up. All right, you have her on, as I do it straight. You gotta make it up. And I have heard fifty-two million. No, that's Alex, I'm sorry. And Alex is gonna be fifty-two, not fifty-four, so at twenty-five dollars an hour, he's alive. Or is he not starting that, if he's not starting that until after July one, about three things? Okay, so he's, there was no four percent, yeah, finish. No. So I will agree to that, okay, so that would be the. Well, that's right, all right, what beautiful, you mean, on that, he's one third. I, I heard. Mm-hmm. Scott, maybe. Scott isn't in there, but we might have a link, so. In the deck, she's at the bottom, correct? Oh, yeah, DeBolt, she is in the bottom. Okay, so she's up, so you can take Scott changes to one thousand, four hundred and ninety-two thousand. But he's only on for forty hours, he's like. He's been replaced by a woman, but we're not gonna have both of them, we're only have the one. Both by you. Which, like, Sally has on for forty hours, she's about to front, and then you're. And then Scott's on. So Scott, believe it or not, Scott. Is it Belinda or what? The, it's okay. Okay, so Scott, he's gonna be, his salary, one thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars, because he's only forty hours, that's all we have. But he won't have. No insurance, he's already. Yeah. So Jill, she's at forty-four. Only do. Only do. Oh, I remember, I think there's people, but I'm, no. Always a big one. Where it's like, oh, and there's one. You have a, you have two thousand and eighty-eight hours for mixture that you put in? Well, well. Yeah, but my salary's in, like, as I'm saying, you multiply, you're hourly by two thousand and eighty-eight.
That's what he was.
Twenty-eight. That was this year, next year's went two thousand eighty-eight, you're doling, you know, to that. That's right. Yeah, no. I know it's probably thousand, yeah, because that's what I. Okay, twenty-eight, so that's what it is. All right, and then, as we pass them. Um. Continue. He's done.
He's definitely.
Done for you? Oh, my. How's John, if I'm right? Hmm?
Donald won't be able to.
We are in, so she's thirty-five hundred, that's all we have. Our part-time. Okay, so you're, uh, okay, like, thirty? Twenty-five hundred, totally. Okay. Yeah, good, okay. Kelly Oliver, forty-three. Kelly, um, had a decrease in her weight, nursing. So she will be, you have her turning foot too, so she has a blood difference that. That can be reported. Nadine. The same one, yeah. And you got one of that.
Well, I'm down, um. Or at night, we have a big shift.
Who?
Then, uh.
Belinda?
Probably another thing compared to Kelly.
Kelly's trying to change, she's trying to keep it. Looks to paperless, maybe. Looks about at all. Okay, go on, I'll buy a couple, sorry, nineteen seventy-six, it's a year.
Yeah.
Nineteen seventy-six.
Yeah, you're just.
So one of them, I think I remember, um, the nurse, something, when. Oh, no, I'm forty, I'm not fifty-seven. I'm only working for the Alvin. Okay. We just, we did about the twenty-nine, because that's really how we made it. I'm, I'm, I'm working, okay, okay, right, let me go fix the, shoot a quick.
What, 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 Linda be working, she been working.
She will, I, I bet she won't be starting, um, until the ninth.
Yeah.
Doing, and the nurse isn't starting until August, but.
Right.
So the nurse will be. Not the seventy-five, she's, she's only in sixty-eight. Not the seventy-five, she's, she's only in sixty-eight.
When we get, get done bringing stuff, all the changes and everything. You send us a clean sheet.
Yeah.
We do that, you know, I mean, I mean, I might get done writing on that thing, I won't know what.
Yeah, I, that's already what mine's, so.
But you're having fifteen employees, which is public health. You realize that fifteen.
You know how many self-employed workers have, and one that part, right?
We clinics, though.
And you're not just. You have a billion, some of the various, and everything, compared to.
Right. And apparently, the grants complete that. Your family servant are good. Fast, and it covers your FICA, IFRS. I mean, I don't want you guys to come back next year and say, we're short, we need more money.
We've not put any grants in budgets that are not paying.
Yeah. Okay. Because, like, all these wages.
Because of the, the situation where we, we really went over those different parts, you know, because we don't, you know, I'm being a thing.
That's why mine is down, always down.
And you guys are combining other jobs, so you don't have to hire.
Well, there's one thing I was, I'm looking at, and lots of people don't like to talk about it, but it's gonna be the change coming in public health. We don't like it, but the state's gonna do it anyway, we'll, we'll reorganize itself. And I would like to see the public health department and Milliken County VA. Satisfactory department, when they, when they come to look at. You know, a lot of, there's not very many departments like ours in the state.
Yeah.
There's probably only four or five more, maybe. That has a budget like we have, because we talk to a lot of other departments.
They can't believe it.
In the state, you know, and, and a lot of them are run on less than two hundred thousand dollars, but. Go back, yes, they have a hospital, they have this, that we don't have, but, you know. We put out an awful lot of taxpayer dollars for public health. You know. At some time, we was. I was, I don't know how long I and Carol felt about it, but, you know, a lot of people criticized us for not, for not supporting you people. Well, we had supported you, people never vetted that much. You know, we fully funded you. Six hundred and some thousand dollars, fully funding you, and, and there was just some. I'm just gonna call it mismanagement. I'm not gonna blame anybody, but I guess that's what it come down to. And we're working through it, and they don't like it, but we're gonna get through it, we're gonna make it better. And that's about all I've been asked, you know, that we work together on this, that's the reason we're having a meeting this morning. We wanna get started on this early before we get the next few budgets and stuff. I think it's important that, you know, we're one span, we know where each other stands on this. I don't, I don't wanna see problems, and I don't wanna see people drowning back and forth about, well, you know, it can't be anything that'll fare well, they won't help us down there, uh. We're gonna get through that. Yeah, what do you guys got?
Well, I've always asked you guys to come and talk to us, and I would love to meet you every week. I mean, what happens, because we don't know what all goes on down there. Do you just take one family to the doctor's office, and you sit there all day, and then you come home? Inform us of what sometimes your day is like, that you're collecting this kind of tax dollars, that we know they're well-staffed. So, this is what we would.
I don't have to, myself, do I?
Give us, give us the rundown, this is, this is what we would like to see, this is what the taxpayers would like to see, um, then we can go from there. Like, these figures scare me tremendously, and, you know, we get reamed up the budget, up the budget, and. It, it's, it's overwhelming, yeah. And we've been told by a lot of counties, we can't believe you guys put that much money into public health. Foolmaking is what people want, if that is what I'm trying to say.
No, no.
Foolmaking is what we need, and if push comes to shove, I would just go, filmmakers and, and. A nurse, and cut out all this other stuff, providing the grants still come, but when they stop. You're, you think you're gonna be in a bit of trouble.
Well, you have to, you know, so, you know, also.
So, true.
You also will come out and grant, and you think you're, you see this part of the. Five hundred thousand, you know, twenty-two.
And it doesn't come tomorrow, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Thing is, like, there's, I'm telling you one, in reality, that's what we're starting to accomplish, we're two.
Right.
One, the goal is set, set up for next year, one is, in the month of early, playing on, you have a lot, two hundred and one is, I'm doing, doing, I'm. That's the point, when it's, when that's the end, but I wanted to clean the charge up, you know, like, and that's what we're doing. That's true.
This is cool.
I mean, but they just won't send them on, always, and, and, and.
With their five hundred, twenty-five, ten, whatever benefit.
Yeah.
I mean, the benefit is now that forty thousand, on to their salary.
This is the approach that I really, really, like, never had, I, I mean, this is the revenue, because it shows you by the front line, how much of the money that you have, you have to, you have to. So, right now, the goal's in there, you know, almost being without, just going down to the money.
Right. So, right. Right.
And that is mainly.
But I guess I was hoping you guys would maybe, the, I don't know, the administrator and I'm the office administrator, combine that, or something. Combine it, I, I guess I don't understand, are you gonna be that busy?
He's still working, right?
And you.
Yeah, and we used to have two offices, um, we had to do that, now it's a one.
Okay.
They only have one, um.
Okay, good.
That's out, that will be out.
Okay.
That's only, and they've gone, but it's. Um. Typical things, but, 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 um.
I was the administrator, but I also took the four, the two, uh, right, so, that's how the top of the work is, is the first step. So, that was part of my, so, part of my salary is funded by, as we can, the salary. Um, and Brenna, who's in this position, she, her first work, they were, she has a new one, she's been working, so she's gonna eat that, hopefully, and pull in that, right, um. And I'm planning to come on for a while, pressure keeps believing, until the last insult. With that, we, the last thing that. Um, so, in reality, the initial position is always, it is also working, so, and Brenna will be working in front, in one of, you know, only one. Which, which come with your girl?
I just, it's the same format, it's just, quite a little enough, so we were given it. So, now you're, it's still at one million, thirty-nine thousand, seventy dollars, thirty-eight, so.
All right.
One million, thirty-nine, one thirty-seven.
This is Richard's in line, you said.
I think I put yours on the top of yours. I did it, the merchant guy. I don't know.
Um, so, we got, we go, the one, the one, and I showed you, okay, so, move it then. Um, salary donation, we got twenty-one million, one fifty-five.
That is all that's been, as to the year that.
I totally agree with that, so. That's your shot, who is this? It's you. With these changes that requiring people, we're also accepting some, um, changes, you know, one drive up, and the other, and the other one that we can pass. So, we're, we've got, um, give and take here, we've taken the opioid brand, they're concerned about going, so we've taken that opioid out from here. So, we'll be bringing you down next week with the updated version of what we brought you before, that showed you five hundred thousand, and how we're gonna do it. So, you'll be able to see that when you get. Brenna and I are going down this afternoon, so we'll bring that back to you, but we have two, it's not updated, um, version of that yellow, purple thing. You know, an updated version of your inspiration, um, that shows, um, basically, we've. We've. Taken what Brent brought out, her original salary, and now brought out, which is going to be, so, we're giving you the back, but, 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 on the emergency, it's not possible. So, we're being, we're coming in, but the emergency, um, well, we're coming back, there you go.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we could do, we could do the work first, if, if, if.
Right.
We'll do that work, and then we'll, okay, but I'm on the button, I'm on.
Okay.
How long have you been?
Okay.
The other changes that we'll be talking to you about are the first changes, and when we pick out that opioid, and then we, um, switch the grants that we're looking at. You know, the one that, you know, D U P, versus the one with people from, um, we're, we'll be changing that, we're gonna take that, obviously. March, and super purchase expense, one, right on, so we'll be taking, give away another one, I don't know, but, you want to get an additional in that grant? We're all sending it within that grant, so I'm just around, you know? Um, so, honestly, with these changes, we have a real, they mentioned that, so it's not satisfying to be.
So, you thought maybe runs short in, of this month, is that what's being, okay?
We're still hoping for the money to come, we're, we're talking, and everything's getting, so.
We, we've gotten, uh, something yesterday, and they, uh, Iowa's going to, uh, um, they're coming, hey, now that, uh.
We tell them, you want to.
You have a dollar amount of that?
Uh, I can get it, yeah.
Yeah, so we. Yeah, we've been asking for that stuff, we should see if they're on top of it, because.
Well, she can't, she has the deposits, she has the deposits for the.
I mean, do they have a desk?
And then they will.
Right, but it's what I'm saying, it's last week, no, you said it was like seventy some thou, seventy-nine thousand, whatever, that is out there, or though, or.
It's out there, and we.
And then you said you had two of the checks, and it was fourteen thousand, so there's, we're just making sure that it's in time, because. She doesn't want to, and I will not allow her to, state won't let allow her to, Galloway won't allow her to pay any feeble unless there are, there's money there. So, you've gotta make sure that everything keeps kind of, and yes, the county has to cover stuff, but. That doesn't mean you don't have a responsibility to pull in when you feel that you're gonna pull in.
Well, we, like, you said, we will fill everything, everything is.
Right, nothing more, but we.
We need, we have.
We don't need to know what the dollars amounts are, those that have been built, we're like, okay, this is what's been built out there, that's what it's coming in. Rather than it's all, it's a guessing game over here, so.
Well, it's a guessing game, unfortunately, for us, because we.
But if you build it, then we have no control over it. No, not on win, because they will be paying it, so we don't.
Well, they would, yeah. Sure, and last time we came, we brought a sheet that talked about the revenue, and we can send you a copy of what we're anticipating. Because we don't have much money to do.
No, I, I understand that, what I'm asking is, when we build for them, if you can let Jolene know, these have been built out, so they will be coming in for sure. Rather than where, where anticipating that we're going to build this amount, for that, we're done, and, right, we're, it's all, we're just asking, when that whole amount that's still up, and it's been built up.
Waiting to kind of play us a seventy-one. And that's seventy-one, come on, please.
And so, I have the money thing in there.
So, everything's, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, has been built.
Everything's been built, uh, we will build June, we have to build June, but everything's been built, we can, right, yeah, right. Everything's been built, it's been built, and we're done, there's nothing more.
Okay, we're done, we're done. We're just waiting.
And we don't have any buildings to be pulled.
No, that's not what we're asking, we're just waiting to know what is.
Seventy-one.
Okay.
That's what happened.
Is that putting that fourteen thousand in from there already, or is that just on top of that? There's two checks that we bought to Jill last week, total fourteen thousand.
We'll update it, we'll, we'll keep those off, thank you, two years, yeah, we'll, and so you know what we've, um, standing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're, yeah. Yeah.
Uh, next year, I'm trying to get all the grants that up there, uh, the base, and, and, just go, when they, uh, come, and, and, you may have a grant, but a whole time, I don't know. There have been plans in the last, like, forty years, where I have contacts, and, it's been sixty days, and I've waited a lot of time, so I'm not, just watching, you know, if you hate that place, it'll go back, and, and they reissue it, it doesn't have a, so. So, it would be helpful to help us, to, 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 you know, one, that, that, like. Kind of hard of a process, it's, it's, it's going off.
And when you, when this one at the bottom was a stretch, based on that, I'm just, I'm just picking that with everyone that you got, right? That's the, we call that, right, okay, so.
That's, that's the.
And I'm looking at, because I base on everything.
What they decide, what they decide to do on everything, even if that, when the thing that we do that in September, so where I'm, I, I'm wanting you guys to be aware, this is what you're spending a month. Salary, FICA, IFRS, like, and everything, this is what you're gonna have in three months, so you've gotta have that revenue company, compensate for that, that's what this is showing in the great value.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, you know, really nice meeting Alex, you know, we, we talked, uh, you talked about a, a back payment. Uh, and you said that, uh, it hasn't been approved, you were just waiting on it, you were still waiting on it.
Yeah, that's one of the stamp mail checks, so, it, it, it says in Iowa grain stove, uh, uh, pay, so when it says pay on there, and it just means they've kept the check. So, once it's a pay, I've got that.
He's referring to the university preparedness, the corrective, corrective one, from the twenty-five.
Yeah, it says approved and paid, and it's coming, so, yeah, that was a. Yeah, we weren't sure that was coming in this year, or next year, but it is. And it says, we're, just coming tomorrow, so, but it was the next day, so I don't know.
And how much is that?
Uh, an additional, if not, you know, which either passive, that's, if, I don't know.
Okay. There's no payout, we've, we've done it.
Even the payout, you know, it's, it's, a lot. We've got, which grant.
They need, you know, that Alex, you can, there is, that's what they want, like, we're, anything that we know.
Okay, I love working.
So, how do you guys looking that out, looking at on top of the building? Are you covering the whole utility? You're covering the whole.
And there are all the different, but, I don't know.
We, we included it all in that sort of, it's all in there, and I just find we talk about, like, you know, when you're, you're doing it, and you're bad, you can work, or, have to give them, or the other one.
That's, that's, we didn't.
Yeah, that's what.
Did you think that's going to, don't you think?
No, my advice is supplies, we don't, if Kevin comes down, you know, we don't pay.
And I, we haven't seen anything, it's, it's all.
She has, um, I don't know, I don't know.
Oh, I don't know, but, that was, that was, but she, she obviously saying that, that was, that was three years.
Yeah.
Like, different people, but.
Still, you know, a lot of hair, and the things, right now, you guys are directly running, because. Put it all, you told me, I bet you, yeah, I mean, like.
Every.
What's that?
That's me, because I'm on you, Val.
It's too young to, I got gray hair, my beard, and nothing left on my head, I can start to get one whenever I want.
And the plan always, like, I've worked through, you know, we know, it's, you know. Um, the plan is to hold it, and, 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 um.
Something good for him.
Well, I mean, you know, the. Your big purchases.
Honestly, the. I think they did an inventory and they sent it through. Let's leave it at five hundred.
Will you read it? Because maybe we know home care. The givers to go out and use more home care? Or are you still at forty? What's what's the number you got?
Uh, I would have to look at the number. I think it's still right around forty. We have some new magnets.
They lost. So um. Okay. How many of them have that are non? Half. Probably two thirty.
And then we say not at all. Jill has twenty five that she's showing that please something. So that's.
Well, it's one of the ones that you know.
Look, I'm saying they don't pay. That's right.
Well, they they could be funded by.
Right, because they don't pay. The grant or the grant. Now, they're trying to get a list for Richard and stuff the other day.
We we had the local public about that. Next week, we uh we just. If they weren't originally getting a lot of.
Don't you just put you one you have to.
Well, what I what I'm wondering, what I want to see is, you know. What grant you're giving me and pay in the next two months. I mean, not all these grants come at one time. Do they? I mean, most of them do. Um.
I would say the Skip Grant, the President of the Management is. People can march from um. Cornford Idol West, I'm definitely working on sort of all this, I believe. But the rest of them, they were several brands. They work with artists who need it.
I think the other thing you mentioned is.
That's what I'd like to hear that please is is the. So if we get it on the big screen or there's load on the table here or it makes different copies of it so that we can all see what. You know, this is kind of hard for me. I just visualize. If you're setting a tiny. You know, the amount of money you need every month to pay.
Well, maybe because I did, it shows you what not were expected. Now you're just. Are are you are you wanting to know? I just question, what have we built out for each grant? That we are expecting to meet and what we're expecting to watch?
Right, I mean.
Okay, we can show you that. And then we start the new week because then we'll be going and renewing. Everything's our friend for a long. Um, so we can give you a spreadsheet that gets involved a list of our goals. Here's what they do. Here's what we do in. Here's the code and here's what we go.
And who adds to what?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, yeah, well, and you told her that you weren't that like. Just like the one for July, you want to be. We take a little time to spread it. And I'm not I'm not on the books, so where I was.
Understand. Uh, we can make it next week. We'll try to follow you.
Okay, okay. Well, let's look at it. We're gonna work on you the next day and then um. The bathroom together for you. It's we you when I went back and went through all of their building. Their building is fine. I mean, you you don't even worry about their not. They are built. Uh, their records we take to me that they are building on a tiny factory. Um. Like when I did bill, sometimes you go by basically different. Auto data over here from something else. So you don't get all of the grant only spend on the forty. We but they are building to achieve. The only changes that I made when I did there. Was we caught um. Dennis Prentice, only the judiciary grant, because you know, we screened. And we correct. So they're now building a tiny way as of right now. And we um. I helped them figure out a way to claim admission as all over by one of the grants that we did not think they would be able to claim. That's the only. But I guess I I'm just trying to reassure you. Alex has converted our bill by their.
So would they take their um. Their patients to the profit? Do they give that bill? Mileage and hours? And such like.
To mention. I believe it's thirty dollars. So a short trip. If they take them to, you know, to be a child and that, that. If they would need to take them to. Send them or miss you. Along with seventy five dollars to seventy five dollars.
But that is that reimburse their time or tape them.
I think we time it.
And that need change because.
No, it it whatever.
What Jolene said you guys support is that they just like the grant company is to say you obtain two thousand dollars, whatever. Then that person that somebody that ran, you know, it's okay, they're backing out and you guys come up with their. Salary and the site and I first and then we turn and everything to figure out what. Actually can cover there and mileage and supply and all that. So it stays a better idea.
But what I'm thinking about is what the process is, is that Alex puts together. This is what we. The fee that we agree on. So. We look at what are the expenses that are involved with that break? And then we come up with this is what we think the average is, right? So. We might take the risk to. Here. Draw off, go down the river and it pays best. Thirty and we call together for two trips and maybe it's made seventy dollars. That's a pretty lucrative.
Right, well, when we take them across the river.
Right, which is why and then that then the.
Right, and that's seventy five.
Yeah, but there are some reasons what we're doing is going, you know, connections that let us. They it's gonna cost us ninety something and and so we, you know, we need to.
Right.
Ninety something. And actually that's on this as well.
No, I understand.
Product money is only this month.
I understand that, like, uh, the lady was coming, I think it was for Tim Frank. That who you've heard before. The the um. You know, I'm talking about the lady who's coming.
Oh, 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 yes, yes.
Yeah, she had said, I think it was like seventy thousand dollars and you said that was a hundred percent covering for. Well, and she's obviously the eighty one thousand.
No, and and if you look at the the information about you, there's a small enough.
Right, that's what I'm saying. But I guess those are the types of phrases that we hear a lot. And we hear it out in the public now. Well, they're a hundred percent funded, uh, fully funded and so. They aren't. You guys are doing sports that.
Right.
But I think there's terminology that's being used or misused out there. That's coming out and it's like that's not. That's not how the fact's way out. Whether it's right or wrong or however it lays out, it would be that grant is used for her, but it's not that. You're paying three thousand two hundred and fifty. She earns less than. She has money from I five. So just.
So right now, our program, according to these sheets, um, is you pay in three thousand.
And that that has her her costumes.
Yeah.
The eighty one thousand.
Yeah.
Okay.
That, okay. And you can refer back to me if you have any questions. It's all right.
What one you.
Nothing else? Yeah.
No, me, I just, I just wanna make sure you guys understand. There's some place there's a loophole where it's draining you. While you're coming up short, even though I understand the grants, uh, but it's kind of like, um. Who was the who was the one that didn't expect the bill?
Matthew.
Matthew. And he didn't charge enough, like if he went to Valisca. So the county paid for all of it, which means out of your budget, which. That's when you were so terribly short of no money in your budget. So I was just trying to overlook and see. Where where is some of the little loopholes that you're not charging up?
Well, I think one thing that I'm gonna ask you is, and I certainly understand that. Everyone here is moving. You know, we can everybody to this table. We're all coming into a possible very. Fun year.
Yes.
I have nothing to do with it, right? That year not. I have nothing to do with it.
Right.
I have something to do with it. Now, I will tell what we've. I want to be.
Right.
When you you started.
That's right.
And you might not like other things about this. So, um. What I'm asking you to be aware of is that this budget. I mean, this is my. I was not.
Right.
Um. You guys can spend a whole lot of time trying to be important on trying to say, are you part of the here, are you part of the there? So I'm gonna tell you. That's right.
Okay.
And so I'm gonna ask you a lot.
Okay.
It's and I and you'll.
I'm well informed. I just don't want to be doing a board meeting when I pull them.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Fire administration and they fired. No, no record laws. We didn't know. And that's what's starting the whole. That's our process.
And I'm gonna tell you. I'm gonna ask for the trucking. I'm gonna ask for a lot of new. For lights and drivings here and um. You guys can spend as much time as you want trying to fix it, but I'm gonna tell you. Give us a little bit of time here and I know that's difficult because we come along. Yeah, but. What just give us a little time. Once we get this budget back in in control where we have the full access to the full county funding. Um, we're gonna be monitoring it very closely. We're gonna be looking at what things we need to do in town. To tighten down and some of that what we. We're gonna ask our board health to look at what programs, you know, are priorities. By number in town, by our assessment that was done last year. And how they help us figure out, are we doing something else? Are we providing? And and what is it? What direction do we go for the next year out? But we don't have a plan for this coming year. We got one. It's valid to on the. Still I know.
Or how long? Oh, I got it. It's June. She's gonna retire.
She's still playing on it. It's taken a little more time.
Could be could be here till July and August. September, she is pretty sure she will be gone. I think that's.
So we need to find somebody to replace Cheryl and replace Janet.
I think we need to.
Well, that's their job.
Oh, that's something. Yeah, but in the past, specifically in a in a whole lot of. Over the years. Right, over the years. Um, we have said how you want it. You want to give me a lift. You want to rehearse people. You want us to give you suggestions and you always say, well, send us that, you know, you know, people who work should send us that. Um, we're not helping them. We're just, there are people that come across the. County, the state, please let me be on the board, you know? Um, but yeah, volunteer to do that. It's just not really what the government wants to do. So. We we're not interested in how it is for the people who's doing it like you. We're interested in what we're doing for. That records don't align with our patients and medical perfection on that. It can't be, you know, right now having a brain is very much, but how do you how do you that? Thank you for that. You think you want to talk about that? Having very. There's one to say on. I think we have so. So I mean, are are. Do you do you want us to send you some people with you think on it? Do you do you want that?
You you have a list, too.
Yeah, it's thirty one by ten, yeah.
We'll reply by late to have that provision. Um, the others, the, you know, other professionals put out times because of. They have. Medical. Experts. We find some of the. We had a term of. I mean, we'll we'll. We're trying to give you some ideas too and you guys read certain.
Okay, thank you for coming up on such a short notice and bringing what you've got to us. Well, I listen to. And I'm sorry I need you to call back.
It's okay, Richard. It's okay. We have to. We'll catch up later. We'll be done.
So, uh, you know, next week we'll. I'll try and give you a call or anywhere on time, location, we'll try and bring you in the last part of it. We're gonna discuss it and stuff, you know?
We'll we'll work on you the next week so that you have that referring to the the current wages and market terms and. Um, the changes in the grant revenue that we see. So we're living that.
Well, I hope we need to do this for the next several months, I say. Months of six weeks, just just to stay on top of the money. All feel like, okay. We reached the flat goal. Yeah. See if it's gonna work. Yes, those things.
Right, never hop in. Well, not someone will move on. Yeah, that changed the way I'm paying. Yeah.
Thank you. If you think it's something or you. You guys are having discussion on, are we charging enough for some service? Give us a call. We'd be happy to come.
And one thing I wanted to bring up. You know, on um environment. And it was proven everything. The. So that's totally, you know.
But he was driving out of town. The situation. And they were not aware of the past payers who paid for other counties.
Right.
So you always think that it's. So was we were paying mileage. Oh, yeah, but mine is that program. The environmental program for this year.
I mean, if it has the name of.
Well, it's it's not him salary wise. It's him with all the mileage that they would be that. Well, and the reason that 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 decision is is it takes out. We wanted to keep it here in the home. Because we wanted to do that. Nobody was telling us that it was better for you. We didn't want to have to be done.
Right.
There's a cost. To getting training. And the cost of training was more than what we were being reversed.
Right.
So they decided a week ago to neighboring the country. And the money that we pulled back in, we weren't.
No. Not the last day anyway. Got on one of the classes, send him the other time.
And I think that's.
They were they were still on the table last night. We should double check.
Does that make it stretching for the public? So then everything. What he didn't wanna do was. First, it comes to dollars mileage, because it's healthy for only auction. You know.
Then this county would pay. That make sense?
Right, but if you just increase the fees and it's spread footage and everything like that, then again, that's.
And then you need to. You can trust the. But that right. Because the freight costs are higher than what you get.
Right.
And so this is things we don't want. Um, the other thing, you know.
You just wish on me. You don't really wish on me.
See, um, his phone. To um. Do you want me to cancel it or try to turn it over? I don't know if Zoney has a contact that can offer a cell phone.
I know, they'll probably say he doesn't. Guess and. Or or talk to Matt.
Because he has contact. He's in the field. I mean, he needs ninety percent of the time. That as well. And every time.
That's rare.
A Friday after the. So. Try to call him back.
Well, then I didn't realize that he was contacting. I just wanted to say starting passing staff, it's first he was contacting everybody on the black guy dropped out. The family well protected. Hope somebody stopped a young daughter. And all those tests and even the post they were all those letters that have been registered to that. And all those tests, and even the post, they poured all those letters, which has been based for, to that time, to some of these um, drinks, that was, no, sure, maybe just having a mission, and that's
Um you know, so I don't know
I would, I would just continue the phone, and then he would do it.
Yeah, if you, but I starting up, when, when you're
It should be, probably be in addition to your, that is, separate contract, it's very important to be
So, um, you want
I was talking about, I was about that.
I, and I asked him, and he was kind of, um, saying, but I've been, I've been, spirit, and the way he's been, he's been writing, but is he in the town, or is it just he does, will he do?
He would probably just often, would he? And say they have authority over him, that, that's his boss.
Right, right, I didn't know, you know, like, ten minutes
But I mean, they, they
So I'll, I'll give him, I'll give him, he's very, very with him, but I want to
Hi, are you gentlemen? Thank you. You're good, thanks. Very interesting, for the, the
Well, quickly, only by
It's something a few weeks ago, I don't know that's not, after you